Good morning. Welcome to the open hearing. ESMA is organising our consultation paper on ESG and sustainability-related terms used in fund names. We're very pleased to have a very good attendance today and we have, hopefully, a helpful programme for you. Going to start with handing over the word to our Chair, Verena Ross, and she will pick proceedings off.
Thank you very much, Patrick, and good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's a great pleasure for me to welcome you to this open hearing on the consultation paper on ESG and sustainability terms in fund names. I think we have today more than 800 registered participants and I see there already around 350 online from a wide range of organisations. We've got asset managers, consultants, law firms, academics, consumer representatives and various public bodies. And I think this just shows the great interest that this initiative has raised. Promoting transparency and tackling greenwashing is one of ESMA's priorities in the area of sustainable finance, and as such it has been included in our sustainable finance roadmap, which we published last February, and more recently in the ESMA five-year strategy. Investors are increasingly interested in to shift their savings to sustainable investments to support a more sustainable future and help the transition. So ESMA's focus is on this investor interest and the potential detriment arising from greenwashing, in line with our overall investor protection mandate and the high priority we give that. So today's hearing supports our public consultation on the use of ESG and sustainability-related terms in fund names. Our aim here is that investors should be confident that they are being sold products that deliver the sustainability features advertised to them in the name of the fund. We wish to address the greenwashing risk at the fund level that can arise when there's a lack of alignment between a fund's ESG or sustainability-related name and its ESG or sustainability-related investment strategy. Our main concern relates to funds that are disclosing under Article VIII of the SFDR. Today, any fund can disclose that they are promoting environmental or social characteristics, so they can disclose under Article VIII. But they can do so without any commitment to a minimum proportion of investments used to promote that characteristic. Obviously, that's the extreme, we don't expect that from most people, but it's certainly possible. And in our view, such funds that do not have at least a certain proportion of their investments living up to the commitments that they made by giving their fund that particular name of ESG or sustainability promoting, this risks serious misrepresentation and ultimately greenwashing. So our consultation paper focuses on this issue. We propose and are consulting on a way forward that we at ESMA believe could be instrumental in combating this aspect of greenwashing. Applying minimum safeguards and introducing quantitative thresholds may help to better align a fund's name and its strategy, and thus minimising the risk of investor harm. We at ESMA are keeping an open mind about the West Way to address these concerns. Our proposals in this consultation paper represent a way to do something about the greenwashing concerns that we've identified here in relation to the fund industry, but we want to hear from you what you think and whether there are any alternatives we should consider. I want to be clear, we also support potential future legislative efforts to create clear criteria for investment funds making sustainability disclosures. For instance, one solution could be for the European Commission to propose sustainability labels for financial products in order to help generate much-needed clarity for retail investors. However, we believe the current greenwashing risks that we have identified are too important and too urgent to address, and therefore we have put forward these concrete proposals on fund names. In today's hearing, my ESMA colleagues will present the consultation paper followed by a Q&amp;A session. I hope that they can help clarify our proposals for you and also answer any questions that you may have. First and foremost, today's hearing is also an opportunity for you to give us valuable feedback now orally and then hopefully later in writing as well. I would like to now give the floor to Durbal Roland, Chair of ESMA's Investment Management Standing Committee and Deputy Governor of the Central Bank of Ireland, and she will also give you some introductory remarks before going into the substance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Verena, and good morning to everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank Verena and the team at ESMA for organising the event and indeed to all of you for joining us this morning, which I think will be a really important and fruitful discussion. By way of introduction, I have the privilege of chairing the ESMA Investment Management Standing Committee, and of course we work particularly focused on asset management-related issues, and we are the standing committee responsible for developing these proposed guidelines on sustainable fund names. And as you've heard from Verena, sustainable finance is a key priority for ESMA and indeed for all of us, because there is an absolute need for an effective and transparent focus in the area of ESG. It's ever so important, we all recognise that. And this event is a key opportunity for you to raise your comments, feedback on this consultation on fund names, on the use of ESG and other sustainability-related terms. And it's clear to all of us that there is continued and strong investor demand for ESG products, which makes it essential for both regulators and industry to work together to support and encourage the development of products that meet the highest standards of transparency and trustworthiness relating to sustainability claims. And it is only by ensuring the trust and confidence of investors in these products that we can in fact support a real and sustained transition to a more carbon-neutral economy and ensure that investments are having a real impact in delivering on all of our goals of mitigating climate change and protecting our natural environment now and into the future. And of course, with such a really important and ambitious set of targets, those outcomes being delivered don't come without challenges. We know the SFDR disclosure requirements have now been in place for about two years. We also know that the Level Two obligations came in just earlier this month. And of course, we seek to improve transparency regarding sustainable investment products, but it has been our lived experience as regulators that a number of investment funds have not been fully aligned when it comes to the characteristics of their underlying investments and how those investments have been marketed or portrayed to their investors. And this can lead to a gap between reality and the investor expectation. And such a gap can erode investor trust and confidence into how their money is invested and how it is being used, and that can ultimately undermine trust and confidence in the market and in fact the effectiveness of the underlying important goal. So greenwashing is an acknowledged and growing risk in the area of sustainable finance, and it is a focus of concern. So given the importance of new investment to support the transition to carbon neutrality and the potential for greenwashing to undermine those objectives and confidence in the sector, we believe that action is needed now to address those risks and to support the achievement of the EU's sustainable finance target. So it's in that context that ESMA, together with very many European regulators, have come together and we are developing an approach to addressing the risks posed by greenwashing. And of course, that brings us to the topic of today, to have an effective discussion on the proposed guidelines for fund names using ESG-related terms. So this is a very important strategic supervisory priority for ESMA, who in October of last year amended their union-wide strategic supervisory priorities to include this, ESG disclosures. And as part of that work, we have already done work on supervisory briefings on sustainability risks and disclosures in the area of investment management, and we did that last May, the intention being to promote common supervisory practices and approaches to a number of SFDR and taxonomy-related disclosure requirements. That briefing included principle-based guidance on fund names intended to support efforts to combat greenwashing. And of course, there are many more elements of greenwashing risks than fund names alone. However, it's still a really significant and important starting point that needs to be addressed, as this is the first insight an investor has with respect to their investment. And supervisors across the EU have experienced, as I've said, those names not relating to the ESG-related terms that are connotated by the names. And in practice, the investment strategies or assets do not reflect the elements in the fund's names. Now, we have observed over the last number of months examples of funds across Europe that have reassessed the appropriateness of their names in many instances, having changed the names to better reflect the nature and characteristics of the underlying investment. We recognise that's a really positive step for industry, and more work is needed though to ensure the accuracy and veracity of ESG fund names to ensure they're aligned with the fund investment strategy and asset allocation. ESMA have spent the last number of months working with the member states to develop these guidelines that we are going to discuss this morning, and my colleague in ESMA, Davide, will take you through the details very shortly. And we think the level of detail in this approach is both necessary and effective. Of course, we want to hear your feedback, but we expect in the end Article VI, Article VIII and Article IX funds to be capable of being differentiated. And we think that it is really transparent and effective, given their very different characteristics that investors can clearly differentiate those types of funds to, particularly at the starting point with fund names. We do think the guidelines will enhance transparency and add to a better and more effective implementation of the framework as intended. Of course, other initiatives such as legislation may be needed, but we think there's a very strong case to act now, and we're looking forward very much to hearing your feedback and your views today. Again, I just want to thank you for taking the time to participate this morning, and I know my colleagues in ESMA will be listening intently to your feedback. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is David Tassi, and I will be presenting you this proposal about fund names, this consultation paper. So as you can see, this is a table of content where we will be discussing the next half an hour, 40 minutes. I will begin with a short overview of the rationale behind this initiative, and we'll move to provide you with a snapshot of the current situation on the market, what it concerned the use of ESG terms in fund names, then outline the work done so far on fund names, supervisory briefing, and then we'll highlight the potential benefit that we have spent from these guidelines. Finally, we'll have a deep dive into the main elements of the proposed guidelines to finish with the aspects where we are keen to have your feedback. So, the background and rationale, as you have heard already from our speaker before, there is a lot of importance for investors about the fund name. So investors actually look at the name when they have to take an investment decision. Now, given the emphasis that we have seen in the last year on ESG things, investor will probably look at the name to choose their fund in this case. But this is also important for asset managers. Asset managers use the name as a marketing tool, and obviously the use of ESG or sustainability-related terms help these funds stand up. Now, this is organised well, but of course, there is a growing risk of greenwashing, as was said before, that, you know, there might be a misrepresentation of what the fund is actually pointing itself and what it's actually offering to its investors. So what we have done with the help of the Consumers Innovation and Sustainability Unit of our Economics, Financial Stability and Risk Department, ESMA, is to have a look at the current situation, what's happening in the markets, so where are we coming from? Our colleague took around over 29,000 US domiciled funds. They screened them against ESG and sustainability-related words in the name. So what they did was running these funds and checking how they were using ESG words in terms of environmental or social, as you can see, words like climate change or education, and check whether they were part of the name or not. Of course, they also checked phrases, so variation of the words, and especially also the use of the word sustain or sustainability, sustainable and so on. So they did this screening, and the results were quite interesting, as you can see in this slide. They found out that around 40% of these US EU domiciled funds, over 4,000, use at least one ESG or sustainability-related word in the name. Now, is this a lot or not? Well, certainly, there are over 4,000 funds which are potentially impacted by these proposed requirements. Now, what is important is to see how the share of these 4,000 funds according to their SFDR disclosure. Here you go. We have found out that over 500 funds using ESG or sustainability-related words are actually disclosing under Article VI SFDR. This makes it about 13%. Around 2,730 are disclosing under Article VIII, around 65% to 3/3, and almost 1,000 funds are disclosing under Article IX SFDR. Now, what does that mean for us? First of all, those funds disclosing under Article VI are a bit tricky. Meaning, they are using an ESG word in the name, but as you may have seen, the Commission already clarified in their Q&amp;A of July 2021, that already the use of such a name means promoting environmental or social characteristics. So these funds should actually disclose under Article VIII rather than under Article VI. So we can say that these funds may raise potential compliance questions as to the compliance with SFDR. Funds disclosing under Article VIII SFDR are the ones which are potentially impacted by this proposed threshold. The question will be to check whether they meet the requirement we are suggesting or not. The other funds, the funds disclosing under Article IX, actually should be compliant with the Commission Q&amp;A of July 2021 already. Why? Because these Q&amp;A have outlined the fact that these funds must be invested only in sustainable securities as defined by Article 217 SFDR. So they shouldn't be actually impacted by this proposal if they use one ESG or sustainability-related name, because they would meet already the requirement that we are proposing. So this is the, as I said, this is the current situation. Now, what has been done so far? This proposal, this consultation paper, is a step following what was already done by ESMA with the supervisory briefing on sustainability risks and disclosure that was published on ESMA website in May 2022. Now, of course, that supervisory briefing was not only concerned by fund names, but we, in paragraph 31, we laid out principle-based recommendations on the use of ESG and sustainability-related terms in fund. So at the time, we identified the risk, the ease to the use, the misuse of ESG names, but we first decided to lay down principle-based recommendations. This consultation paper and the proposed guidelines, it's actually the next step. So we think of complementing this paragraph on the principal-based recommendation by adding some quantitative threshold for the use of these names. So there is a shift, if you want, from principle-based to actually quantitative threshold. The potential benefits that we are expecting from these guidelines. First thing is actually this threshold, as simple as they may be, they are also easily understood by an investor first of all. It will help regulators in their assessment of fund's names, and it will help financial market participants to know where they are if these guidelines come through. At the same time, this will help avoid the risk of misrepresentation, that we have heard before, mainly to greenwashing. At the same time, it will help meeting investor expectation. Now, this is a pretty interesting aspect that we try to minimise here. This representation is obviously, when you are of, when you look at the fund name, it has certain, it shows certain characteristics, let's say, propose to invest in clean energy, but if the fund doesn't do that, then obviously it's misleading investors. And that's the clear case, that might be, that might be a good case of greenwashing. But that's not all, because we have also to meet investor expectation. Now, an investor may invest in a fund with such name and may find a certain amount of securities promoting these characteristics or even objectives, but is that enough? Is that what the investor really expects? Well, we don't know that. For some, 30% or 50% may be enough, for other, not. So by introducing this quantitative threshold, we actually make sure that investor know already by choosing fund with these names, how much of these would be invested or obtain this objective of to promote these characteristics. And this is pretty, and this aspect is quite important. Another one which we are trying to minimise is the misperception of downgrading of fund's disclosure. Now, I wrote there, misperception of downgrading. Why? Because SFDR is actually a transparency regulation. SFDR doesn't give you any quality brand. SFDR just asks funds to disclose what they are. What's happening though, they is that disclosing under Article VIII is seen worse than disclosing under Article IX. Well, that's not the intent of the law, and by giving actually this threshold, we help minimise this misperception. So it's not true that an Article VIII fund is not as good as an Article IX funds. So this is very important. So that's why we think that by introducing this threshold, we may help also minimise this misperception. After this introduction, let's see what the proposed guidelines look like. First of all, the intention is to issue guidelines under Article 16 of the ESMA regulation. ESMA can do that with this article. Our basis for these guidelines are actually the Regulation on Cross-border Fund Distribution, in particular Article 4.1, and the use of AFMD organisational requirements, Article 14.1a, in its directive, and Article 12.1a, for the Investment Fund Manager directive. Now, what is this about? These requirements, basically, there is an obligation to act honestly and fairly, and all information included in marketing communication should be fair, clear and not misleading. So this is where we're coming from. Communication must be fair, clear and not misleading. So it must be the name. And so, this is this deep dive into the proposed guidelines. So what are the main elements that you have probably read in the consultation paper? But the first one are minimum safeguards, for funds using such terms. Minimum safeguards in terms of exclusion criteria. The next one is a first threshold, 80%. This threshold is for the use of ESG-related words. We have thought of an additional threshold of 50% for sustainability-related terms. And we will look later how this threshold mechanism works, and we hope to clarify what it really means. We also have introduced or proposed some requirement for a specific type of funds, in this case index and impact funds, because they are specific funds, especially impact funds. We really wanted to make sure that these are captured by these guidelines. And the last part is the transitional period, six months for existing funds. What does that mean? It means that after the translation, all translation of these guidelines are published on the ESMA website, a financial market participant will have a transitional period of six months to comply with these new requirements. We think this is enough, because from the moment the guidelines are passed, through the moment they are published, and then additional six months, there would be enough time for fund managers to adapt to these new requirements. So let's start to check to see one by one what these elements are. As we said, the first one are minimum safeguards. Minimum safeguards, as I said, are based on exclusion criteria, and they have to be applied to all investments of the fund. Now, for the purpose of this proposal, we have chosen the exclusion criteria in the Faris Align Benchmark, which are in the Benchmark delegated regulation, Article 12.1 and 2. We are still thinking about this, we are waiting for feedback there. We really want to know from you, this is one of the aspects we are really keen to have your feedback on, because there may be other solutions to do this. The next one is the threshold. Now, why threshold? The threshold, first of all, it's a percentage of the minimum commitment that the financial market participant must disclose in the SFDR pre-contractual disclosure. So we will see later, there is a place, a table in SFDR, where financial mathematician must commit for minimum proportion of investments. Now, the 80% threshold is actually linked to this. The 80% threshold is linked to the minimum proportion of investment used to meet the promoted environmental or social characteristics. Then we saw that there is an additional threshold, 50%. Then we saw that there is an additional threshold, fifty percent. And this represents the minimum proportion of investment used to attain a sustainable objective. All these to make sure that there is an alignment of the name of the fund with the strategy and the planned asset allocation. Let's come now to the threshold mechanism. The threshold mechanism is actually key element of these proposed guidelines. And I hope we can clarify all doubts around this, because we have seen from different articles in the press that there were different interpretation of how this mechanism works. So let's try to make some clarity here. So as you can see here, we have planned asset allocation. On the left, you can see the minimum proportion of investment percentage. This is hundred percent, that's an allocation. And to this, as said before, here, there is to apply minimum safeguards. This is a kind of pre-screening. Portfolio will be cleaned by all these, through the exclusion criteria, all these investment that are mainly excluded by the Paris Align Benchmark. Once that done, we come to the eighty percent threshold. This eighty percent threshold, as I said, is the minimum proportion of investment used to meet the environmental or social characteristic or of sustainable investment objective. Now, this is level, fund must attain to be able to use its name to any ESG-related work. Seventy-five percent is not enough. Must be at least eighty percent in our proposal. The next step is the fifty percent threshold. Now, carefully, it's not fifty percent over eighty. It's fifty, fifty percent of the hundred percent asset allocation. So if you want to use the word sustainable or any sustainable-related word in the name, then fifty percent, at least fifty percent of the planned asset allocation must be in sustainable investment as defined by Article two seventy SFDR. So again, not forty percent, coming from fifty or eighty, but it's just a straight fifty percent. Now, where do we find this information? Because as I said before, this is, you know, around, among the potential benefits that we've seen before, there is the clarity for investors. So an investor will know that if he buys a fund with their name, at least eighty percent of the asset allocation is in securities or investment, which both is characteristic or even sustainable investment. But it's also easy, let's say easier for regulators when they have to assess the name of a fund. So they will receive a prospectus with a name. The name contains an ESG word or a sustainable-related word. And then we like to make sure that the eighty percent threshold or includes also fifty percent threshold are met. Where do they find that? Here. So in annex two of the Commission Delegated Regulation twenty twenty-two, twelve eighty-eight, which is actually level two of the SFDR regulation, there is the planned asset allocation for, for funds disclosing under Article eight SFDR. And you can see there is this table. There is the question, what is the asset allocation plan for this financial product? And if you can read the small letters in red, it says include a narrative explanation of the investment of the financial products, including the minimum proportion of the investment of the financial product used to meet the environmental or social characteristic promoted by the financial product. So this is where you see, that's where the fund manager, we have committed this minimum proportion. That's where we will see whether this minimum proportion of investment meets the threshold that we have proposed. So this is for fund disclosing under Article eight. And in annex three, two, you will find also planned asset allocation for fund disclosing under Article nine SFDR, with narrative in red. So big, here it says again, include the narrative explanation of the investment of the financial product, including the minimum proportion of the investment of the financial product used to meet the sustainable investment objective. As I said before, this is the bulk of our proposed threshold mechanism, whether with the safeguards. But it's not everything. We have thought also of additional recommendation for specific types of funds, in this case index funds, which will be able to use ESG and sustainability-related words in name only if the thresholds are respected, no particular status there. An impact fund. Now, here too, threshold must be respected. And on top of this, what must be respected is what we wrote actually in paragraph thirty of this supervisory briefing, which means that, as you know, impact fund not only look for financial returns, but also for a measurable impact. Since impact fund are a particular type of funds, since investors in impact fund want more than financial returns, want to make sure that their investment has had an impact and this impact must be measurable, we thought of having additional recommendation for this kind of fund. Now, we have stopped there. We know that there are other type of funds that may merit to have specific requirements. And this is also part of our proposal and actually of the question we want to ask, you know, where we want to have feedback. There is, obviously, we want to have feedback on the whole consultation paper. We want to have feedbacks on the level of the threshold chosen. But there are a few questions which we have, which we have on purpose not treated in the, in the consultation. That first of all is the treatment of the derivative. There has been a long debate among the NCA's, among ESMA stuff, to somehow see how the derivative should be treated just for the purpose of this consultation. So only for the purpose of final name. There were debates as how to include derivatives, whether with a notional market value, whether notional value or with market value, how to treat them. There were different views. This is something where we really need to have your views on. We are really waiting for feedback there. Interesting proposal, how to treat this derivative. Same goes for physical or synthetic replication of investments, especially when we talk about collateral. This is also a pretty important aspect that we want to, we want to hear from you. Then, as I said before, we were thinking of adding specific provision for transitional funds. Now, as you know, many funds aim to help transition to clear energy or more sustainable work. We think that maybe may be merit in introducing specific provision for these funds. But again, we look for your, waiting for your feedback on this and see how we can do that. Then the question that we ask ourselves was also, would these guidelines, with this proposal, this requirement of having quantitative threshold work or be effective also for other financial products? Now, as you can, as you have seen, we are, at ESMA, are looking at the investment fund world. So this consultation aims to introduce requirement for investment funds. This is then. But there is the question, would this guidance be also useful for other financial products? So also, also here, your feedback will be welcome. So what's happening now? The consultation, as you know, will close on twenty of February. Today, we hope to have received plenty of feedback from you. Interesting suggestions, critics, I imagine. So we will, we will go through all this material. All the feedback will be analyzed, pretty nice, discussed, the various instances here at ESMA. We expect to have something for you by Q three, twenty twenty-three. It takes some times, but as I said, we like really to bidoro and check each of the feedback to make sure that we capture the peanut market. At the same time, we are, we manage to have this proposal the best way possible. As I said before, the guidelines would be applicable if they approve three months after the publication of the translation at ESMA website. And then we will have this proposed transitional period of six months. So this may at least nine months for complying with this regulation. Plus, I guess, the time from the announcement that these guidelines will be applicable. So I think that the fund manager would have enough time to address the requirement. So as we, as we have seen, there are around four thousand funds that may be impacted by the regulation. What we expect is that at the end of this transitional period of six months, all funds carrying a name with an ESG-related word or a sustainability-related word would comply with this regulation. So the investors out there will be facilitated in their choice and will have somehow the certainty to invest funds promote the wish that ENS characteristic or sustainable objective. So I hope this presentation has verified certain points of our proposal. And now we come to the Q and A session. You can, you have already started, I've seen, to ask questions for our chat. We encourage you to do so for the next hour, I guess. My colleague Patrick Carlson and myself will try to answer all your questions. We may not be able to answer all of them or obviously question of time. But at the same time, don't, don't forget that we are going to keep them. This hearing is registered. We will have access to this question after the session and we will make sure that we will take them into account in the future discussion on these guidelines. So thank you very much for listening to me. I now give the word to my colleague Patrick and we will start with a Q and A session. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Davide. Yes, indeed, it's good to see already very many questions published on our, on our function here, so that's very good. The way this works, and some of you may be veterans on previous SFDR virtual hearings that we've done, we basically look at the questions, we choose one that we answer here live for you and we publish that question and at that point everyone will see the question as well. However, there are so many questions, indeed, we won't be able to catch all of them. But indeed, as Davide mentioned, we, they are registered, they're with us, don't worry. And of course, save your punches for the response to the consultation too, don't worry. You don't have to, to unload everything now, but please, of course, prioritize the questions that you want us to address here and we'll get on with it. And then we have a nice surprise for you at the end. Our head of unit, Antonio Baratelli, will say a few closing words at the end, hopefully pulling together the many strands that have been raised through you, from you, through questions and also the excellent presentation that Davide just gave and our opening statements from our chair and the Chair of the IMSC Investment Management Standing Committee. Okay, so if we start with, with a question, then it's, it's, question reads, why does the draft standard focus on sustainable investment despite MiFID II defining a sustainability preference as PAI, sustainability investments, or tax on me? I'll deal with that part of the question first. No, it's true, of course, the MiFID II and IDD definition of sustainability preference has three elements to it, quite correct. We decided to focus on sustainable investments, perhaps more because of a growing use of sustainable investments by investment funds in their disclosures. Also, it's something measurable as well. PAI consideration, for example, is, is less easy to quantify and also the benefits of which are, are less immediately clear because again, just, you know, considering principal and reverse impacts is basically just disclosure. There are no actual kind of behavioral elements to that. What we obviously try to do here is to combat greenwashing for those funds that use these terms in their names. That's important here. So if you don't use these terms in their name, then obviously they're, they're not affected by these particular guidelines. That's important to clarify here. And therefore, we thought that if the word sustainable is used in the name, the most tangible, measurable parts of sustainable are the sustainable investments. And this is why we, we propose them in the consultation paper. But of course, feel free to, to suggest the MiFID II concept of sustainability preferences in your consultation responses too. If you feel that this would work as well, then of course, we will consider this in our feedback. So thank you for this question. Second part of this question is, how would a fund following this standard comply with Article eight, given the requirement for good governance enshrined under Article eight, which is not mentioned in the draft standard? That's correct. So the way to look at these, the guidelines is that they are additional requirements for those funds that use these terms in their name. And so SFDR applies in and of itself. And that relates, for example, to what Davide mentions about the sustainable investments. Of course, the fifty percent sustainable investment threshold that we mentioned for funds using this name in their term would not affect the requirements for Article nine funds, which have been enshrined in the Q and A published by the European Commission, that they should only make sustainable investments. Likewise, the good governance requirements for Article eight would apply regardless of whatever the guidelines say, of course. This doesn't create a separate regime in that sense. There's something additional for a particular set of financial products. There are investment funds using certain terms in their name. Okay, so we'll do a little bit of back and forth here with Davide. So he does one question and I do one question. This way we have time to, to choose and select the questions. Davide, do you want to go next?
Yeah, thank you, Patrick. So this is the next question is about, are we, do we want to create a new regime for Article nine funds, so investing less than hundred percent? No. So as Patrick was saying, SFDR is one thing, this recommendation, these guidelines is different. So Article nine, the fund disclosing under Article nine have to abide by what the Commission has clarified with Q and A. We like to invest, all of their investment must be sustainable investment. What we are saying here is that if you want to use a name sustainable or sustainability-related words, you have to have at least fifty percent within the eighty percent. Now, this is, this gives me also the, the possibility to clarify something. It might sound a bit odd, but it's good to make some extreme examples here. If your fund needs to invest, say seventy-five percent of its plan and asset allocation in a sustainable investment, as per the definition in SFDR, well, it may not use any kind of name with ESG words or sustainability-related words. That means that the eighty percent threshold is the minimum that the fund must commit to. We want to make sure that this proportion is respected always when using these terms in a name. Same time, we have introduced this fifty percent threshold on sustainable investment to allow for those funds investing in these investments to, to use the name sustainable. Now, fund disclosing under Article eight can also invest in sustainable investments. Thing is, if they don't invest all of their assets in sustainable investment, they will keep to disclose under Article eight instead of under Article nine. That's the difference. And this brings me to another question that I've seen and which I will And this brings me to another question that I've seen and which I will take straight away because it relates to what I'm seeing here. And it's about the fact that the participant is saying, saying that although it's clear that we focus on fund names, the reference to Article 6, 8, and 9 is confusing. Because we said that the guidelines do not intend to be linked to SFDR. There is classification. Now, we are talking here about sustainable finance. We know that all sustainable, all funds in the sustainable finance world must apply with SFDR. So it's irrelevant whether this guidelines applies or not. They will have to disclose according to SFDR. Article 6, if it's about international sustainability risk. Article 8, if they promote ENS characteristic. Article 9, if they want to attain a sustainable objective. That stays, they will remain. We are seeing here is that, that's why we show this, how the, let's say, this distribution among these 4,000 funds that are, that contain a word, an ESG word in the name. That's what we showed them because of course, they will have to disclose under SFDR. They will have to do that anyway. What we are saying here is, if you are telling me that you disclose under Article 6, so basically that you do not promote any environmental or social characteristic, nor do you want to attend to invest any sustainable objective, then you have to be careful. Because if you are using a name, well, the Commission has already clarified that using a name, it's a promotion. Now, the concept of promotion is very wide, it's very large. That's why the Commission on the, on Esma request has clarified that. So what we are saying there is that careful, you are saying that you just integrate sustainability risk, but you are actually putting out your fund with a name that an investor may think that indeed, it promotes certainly ENS characteristic. So the two pieces are different. But of course, since we are talking about sustainable finance, any funds will have to comply anyway with SFDR. And with these additional requirements, they will have to be careful of what name they use. So I hope this has clarified that. Patrick?
Yeah, sure. Sorry. Seems reflex of turning on the mic when you're supposed to be speaking, sorry. One apologies for the feedback effect there. Need to be better at mic discipline here. We have a mic in the room, so there's no need for me to turn on my own. Okay, yeah, so we have many, many questions here. It's good, we'll try to be a bit quicker in dealing with them. So here we have one about, would you be able to share the list? We have a number of relatively similar questions here about sharing the list of the terms we use to determine that there were 4,000 funds that would be affected. We thought about that and considered it already in the CP, whether we should also include that there. I think, I hope you understand, there is some reluctance from our side to do that because we fear that if we set out a closed list of names, they would simply be evaded. And another term would be used similar to those words, but would not be exactly those words. And therefore, this could be a route to circumvention. That's to be blunt, the reason why we haven't published that list. So we don't want people to just check that list and make sure they're not on it if they don't want to worry about the potential guidelines here about the various names, terms used in the name. So that's, that's the main reason why. Obviously, feel free to provide feedback in the consultation response that you think it would be valuable. If you can also think of a way in which that list would not be used for circumvention, that would obviously be helpful as well.
Yeah. Now, related to what Patrick was discussing, I have a question here regarding acronyms like SRI, socially responsible investment. Now, as I said, our research team did a very thorough job. They went through all kinds of possible words that are ESG-related. And I mean, not only in English, but also in other European languages. So we have tried to include all possible words. Of course, SRI, socially responsible investment is a key word. It certainly will be part of this list. You know, we tend to think always about environment. We should not forget the social part of ESG. So yes, socially responsible investment will be as an acronym or as a social response. Full word will be certainly considered as one of the ESG word that they need to be. That if you're using a name, you do meet these requirements.
Okay. To me, another long question here. Did you want to switch, switch to, thank you, sorry? On the 80% coverage ratio, have Esma considered the potential unintended consequences if applied on a continuous basis and calculated as a percentage of NAV? For example, a private debt impact fund in scaling up phase will be undertaking cash calls and therefore, until fully invested, not meet this standard. Equally, what about multi-asset funds investing in derivatives where methodologies for assessing ESG are less mature and therefore, often disclosing lower percentages under SFDR? Oh, indeed, we welcome feedback on the different potential consequences thresholds could have where funds use those terms in their names. The nature of the minimum commitment disclosure in the Article 8 and Article 9 pre-contractual template is relatively immutable. It is a minimum commitment that the financial product is expected to meet at all times. It's not something that was intended to be flexible and that the financial product could simply alter over time. That is indeed one of the drawbacks of a rigid threshold applied in this way. Nonetheless, we felt that in order to give the appropriate impression of that the term in the name gives to investors, we thought the high threshold was important to guarantee that the fund actually does what the term in the name suggests it does. Otherwise, obviously, an obvious route for these kinds of funds that you mentioned in the question would be not to use that term in the name. If that's an important consideration, but to have a lower commitment in order to have a, for example, scale up over time, et cetera, so that at least the minimum is met at all times. Then I think obviously, in that case, having that name, term in the name in the beginning, to us at least, seems misleading to the investor, especially retail investors. And this is what we're trying to target here, obviously. Nonetheless, it's a point well made, obviously, and we're looking for examples about the consequences of the 80% threshold for the ESG or related terms. And indeed, also the 50% for the word sustainable.
Yeah, I have had a question here relating to the Article 8 or Article 9 SFDR. Basically, it's asked us to clarify what is the link between Article 8 and 9 SFDR products and the newly introduced 50% threshold? Why? Because several European regulators are of the opinion that it's not possible to name an Article 8 product as sustainable, only products complying with Article 9. Would the guideline change this approach? Now, as I said before, funds disclosing under Article 8 can obviously invest in sustainable investment. Why not? So that's why we came up with this proposal of 50%. We cannot deny a fund, even if it's disclosing under Article 8, not to use this name if it has a substantial proportion of its investment in sustainable investment. We will be going against Level 1 basically. So we cannot really do that. There were indeed proposals during our discussion of limiting the use of the word sustainable only for fund disclosing under Article 9. But we thought that it was not possible and that's why we chose this way. This is also reflected in the supervisory briefing. Well, there were no threshold there, but the principle was the same. Even fund disclosing under Article 8 can use the word sustainable. And if they reach, as I said, robust, or at least when we put 50%, at least, you know, half of the investment during sustainable investment, they should be allowed to use this term.
Okay, thank you, Davide. We've learned that it takes about 30 seconds to switch over the live feed from one of us to the other. And that's why there's a slight buildup before we start answering the question. But I think we're getting better as we're getting along. So, okay, good, right. So choose another tricky one. You have tricky questions, which is always good. One participant is concerned that the Esma guidelines might turn out a preliminary solution, which could soon be overruled by binding, by binding changes in Level 1 under a revised SFDR. Is this possibility being taken into account by Esma? If so, wouldn't it be better to design Esma's principles on fund naming as a recommendation for the involvement of SFDR in order to avoid yet another major round of adaptation of fund rules slash perspectives? This is a point we've also heard, of course. Fully aware of the potential disruption this could mean for investment funds that are disclosing under SFDR and using these terms in their names, of course. However, as our chair said in the opening remarks, I think we are also quite concerned about the misleading nature in some cases of those funds and what they do compared to what they actually disclose. That's obviously why we are proposing taking action already and not waiting for a potential revision of SFDR. As I'm sure the participants know, in order for Level 1 change to happen, it takes many years. And indeed, during that time, we would have this constant problem of potential greenwashing by funds using these terms in their names happening throughout. And obviously, this is what we want to try to address here. And should there be indeed more far-reaching legislative change? Again, as our chair mentioned in the opening remarks, first of all, we very much back that and want that to happen. Secondly, of course, we could adapt also any guidelines that would have been published in the interim period to also reflect any changes of Level 1 too. So obviously, we are considering the bigger picture as well. I hope that you don't have the impression that we are acting in a silo here. We're certainly trying to act on a risk that we see happening in the markets right now as we have shown through the figures that we have published. But we are also aware of the longer-term potential evolutions that we could see. And we want to ensure that whatever we do are, you know, adaptable also in the future to that.
Yeah, now I have a question here, interesting. It's about the six months transitional period for existing ESG funds. Now, it seems that it's thought that these six months is too short. Now, as I said before, there would be, imagine, we, as I said, we expect to have an outcome to this consultation paper in Q3. So there will be, this guidelines will be approved. If they will be approved at a certain point, and there will be none. Then there will be the time for this guideline to be translated and then published on Esma website. This will take some time. Only from that moment, well, three months after publication, Esma, on the Esma website, the guidelines will be applied. And then the six months transitional period will start. So we're looking somehow, I would say, around a year, which is a bit more than six months. And indeed, management compensation, we have to adapt. How will they adapt? Either by changing the name if they think they cannot reach this threshold or by adapting their asset allocation. Of course, it takes time, especially if we think about changing a name because, you know, you would have to go through shareholder, there would be the meetings and so on. Yeah, the procedure is long, but it can be done. We really thought about this. And I must say that there were also some actually considering, some NCA is considering the six months too long. So yeah, the, as you can see, there is, there are different tastes to this. And for some, six months is too short, for some is too long. So we thought indeed that the six months, together with the time that I mentioned before, would be enough for this, for this, for funds to comply with this regulation. I want to add another thing here that it's important and it goes together with this. As you may obviously expect, it is not always easy for a fund manager to keep a level constant, especially if it is at the border of this 80%. Market movement may affect this threshold. Would that be a bridge? Would they have to change their name? So nothing as such. We will consider this as a kind of passive bridge, each NCA is a procedure. There would be time for the fund manager to adapt again or to come back to that level. So we are not really looking at, you know, how can I say, disrupt, such disruptive guidelines. We understand the difficulties of the industries. We understand the difficulties of adapting. We understand how market react and how this would affect them. But we are talking about a fund name, so something that stays. It's there, it's published, it's using marketing materials. So there is this kind of flexibility if you want building the mechanism that each NCA will use.
Okay, thank you, Davide. I will take over. We have so many questions now that we need to, we need to speed up. But again, fear not, every question is recorded by us, of course, so we will know what they are. So we do appreciate them. I have one here on, again, a slightly broader nature. We observe in the market a broad range of implementation of the concept of sustainable investment. Studies show that more than 90% of MSCI world companies are owned by at least one Article 9 fund and thus considered sustainable investments. Through the proposed guidelines, investors should have a good level of confidence about what they are buying. At the same time, quantitative thresholds will be linked to a concept that still needs to be clarified. See the questions handed to the Commission. What is your view on this aspect? It's true, sustainable investment exists as a legal definition of SFDR, Article 217. There are investments in economic activities that contribute to an environmental or social objective. The investment as a whole must not do significant harm to any environmental or social objective that's disclosed through consistency with the PAI indicators, that DNSH aspect. And finally, investing company must follow good governance practices. That's the kind of legal definition, obviously. I think in the practical terms of how to disclose the level of sustainable investments in investing companies, subject to some questions the ESAs have sent to the European Commission, that's entirely correct, in last September. And those responses could indeed affect how and to what level and to what extent financial products, including investment funds, the extent to which their investments are sustainable investments. That's entirely correct. However, there is of course, a temporal aspect to this entire exercise. We are consulting on guidelines right now. As Davide said, we are not probably likely to come out with some kind of final outcome to that until Q3. Certainly hope by then that the Commission would have responded to the questions we sent last September. We fully expect them to by then. So certainly, before any kind of application of guidelines, those aspects of a sustainable investments would have been clarified. So certainly, we did consider this and considered it important enough from a time perspective that we start the consultation already on both types of thresholds and the minimum criteria for the exclusion proposals from the PAB delegated regulation. Indeed, we thought we wanted to consult on that already, despite, of course, there being some questions about the disclosure of sustainable investments in particular. But again, we keep saying throughout, please feel free to include recommendations about this in your consultation responses due by the 20th of February.
Yeah. Thank you, question about the MIMON safeguards. Now, as I said before, we chose the PAB, Personal Life Benchmark as a proxy. It's not a definite choice. We thought that it would be useful for applying safeguards. And we thought about the Paris aligned benchmark as such. Now, it's not written in stone. We are actually welcome feedback on this. For example, this question is published. This is of which PAB article are you looking at? Well, we actually mentioned twelve, one and two. So not only the basic exclusion like controversial weapons, which are actually applied also national level or any other social violations, but, you know, as the other, the other paragraph mentioned also, companies generating revenue or fifty percent or more of their revenues from oil or gas and so on. Yeah, this is, this is something we're really thinking about. We wanted to put something in terms of minimum safeguards because we think it's important that the portfolio is screened or pre-screened before applying this threshold. But please come back to us with other suggestions or critiques or how to, to make this more workable.
All right, very good. Yeah. How are the remainder investments supposed to comply with the PAB criteria if they cannot be valued as ESG-related or sustainable and are therefore considered as remainder investments? Well, I think, I think Davide has already spoken about this quite a lot. So the exclusions are basically just company exclusions. If you read Article twelve, one of the, the regulation twenty twenty eighteen eighteen, which is the, the BMR delegated regulation, gives you essentially a, a list of companies that have to be excluded from the benchmark. So there are no other actual PAB criteria that are applied to this. There are these exclusion criteria. So this includes companies involved in the controversial weapons cultivation and production of tobacco, violation of the UNGC or OECD, companies that derive one percent or more of the revenues from, from hardcore or lignite, ten percent from oil fuels, fifty percent from gas fuels or fifty percent from companies with electricity generation with a GHG intensity of more than a hundred grams of CO2 equivalent per kilowatt hour. So for those are the twelve, one exclusions. These are not, in that sense, you know, some kind of criteria that the PAB would have to apply. Otherwise, it's just an exclusion of the companies. So even for the remainder of the investments outside the eighty percent, of course, those investments should not be in such companies, essentially. Therefore, we do not consider this to be a technical hurdle for, uh, the, the, the application of the, the minimum criteria for, for funds using these names. Again, we have to stress throughout that any of these proposals, and by the way, there was one question as well, I think I'll, sorry, I'll publish it if I can find it later on. But there was a question about whether, because we, we use in that, in the, the consultation paper, the word recommendation. Obviously, in these guidelines, the, the minimum criteria would, would apply. In that sense, they're not voluntary. Obviously, you know, they are applied as part of the guidelines. And that would indeed be, in that sense, you know, mandatory, of course. They're not just a recommendation that they should, they, they, they could be applied for, for good practice. That's not the case. The idea was to have the three elements applied together. Minimum criteria for all investments, eighty percent if ESG terms are used, and fifty percent sustainability terms.
Yeah, I'll take over the next question, and this is quite a tricky one. So has ESMA performed a mapping exercise of the existing NCA regime to deal with the issue? And there are other similar question here specifically relating to recommendation of the AMF on this. But as you may, as you may know, NCA participate to the work of ESMA. You heard the word at the beginning, the introductory work of our investment manager standing committee chair. All NCA is represented. They have contributed to these guidelines. That's where we had our discussions or various aspects. Now, we know that, for example, France has this recommendation case. The Germans, the BaFin, did something similar, although they haven't published their guidelines. We know there are other countries applying certain threshold to this. There's always been an attention to naming from the part of the NCA's. What we are trying to do here is to foster convergence because if you and I'm not, yeah, I'm just thinking loud, if you have registered your fund in a country, a certain regime, then you may not be able to meet the requirements in another country, but being, you know, all European and the funds will be distributed across Europe, that would be enough. So what we're trying to do here also is to foster convergence so that all NCA's respective, you know, or the, or all funds irrespective of which jurisdiction they are registered, they will have, but they will receive the same treatment. This is one thing. Now, although we are very open on the instrument proposed, so we are proposing guidelines here. Maybe further discussion is guidelines actually are at the advantage of the compliant explained mechanism. So we will know which NCA will apply these guidelines or maybe they will think that their own guidelines are better. Obviously, we don't welcome that, but that's the reality. But as I said, our intention is to create common playing field across Europe, across the EU for funds. So that every investor, wherever you invest, is the same, knows that the fund is being treated similarly across, across the board.
Okay, very good. Boy, we're getting all the questions about the safeguards. That's good. There was one question, sorry, I couldn't find earlier, but if I find it later, I'll publish it. But it was a question about whether they are the same as the taxonomy safeguards. No, they're not the same. This would obviously apply only to investment funds using these terms in their name. Any taxonomy regulation related minimum safeguards to, to environmentally sustainable economic activities would apply regardless and independently of, of these. These are specific criteria for those funds that use these names. And it would apply to, to, to all their investments. But there's another good question here, which I have found and will publish, about why we recommended the PAB exclusions rather than the CTP exclusions. So to explain, so the Paris aligned benchmark is one of the two type of benchmark in, in the BMR delegated regulation. The other is indeed the climate transition benchmark. And they have slightly different exclusion criteria. That's, that's correct. So under Article ten of this same regulation that we're talking about, the CTBs have a slightly redacted list of these exclusion criteria. So of the ones that I just read out, only the first three, which are the controversial weapons, tobacco and the violations of the UNGC or OECD. And any guidelines would be, would be part of these exclusion criteria and also the ones in paragraph two of Article twelve, which relate to companies found or estimated by state providers to significantly harm any of the taxonomy regulation environmental objectives. But obviously, this would exclude that those one, ten, fifty and fifty percent that I read out to you about the fossil fuels of, obviously, these are transition benchmarks. So indeed, they are designed to allow the, the transition to happen. So indeed, we were thinking of an overarching sets of, of principles that should give investors some kind of surety that when ESG or, or sustainable words are used in the title, that they are not being used to, to fund especially coal companies. Now, thi- this is why we have a separate question to you all about transitional funds or words with, with the word transition or something related to the word transition. And whether that requires some kind of separate consideration or additional consideration. I think this is a, a good place to, to put some observations you may have on whether we, we do and you need to also differentiate such words so that it would be possible to also have a fund with such words in the name, able to invest in companies that derive more than one percent of their revenue from coal, for example. But we definitely felt that, given the international attention on fossil fuel investments, that if the name of the fund contains a word that denotes sustainability or environmental features, then that should not be used to fund coal, obviously. And that's, that was one of the, the main reasons why we went with the PAB exclusions, the full Article twelve, one rather than half of it, which would apply to the CTBs. But again, as we've left the door open for some kind of separate consideration for transition terms, then this could indeed be one way to do it. But certainly, we, we want feedback on that. So thank you for the good question.
I have a question here, which sounds a bit trivial, but I think it's important to mention that it's about if Article eight does not have any ESG related terms, are there any minimum proportion requirements or minimum safeguards classified as Article eight? So that's, that's the, the straightforward answer, but carefully. If the fund doesn't have any ESG related name, then these guidelines won't be applicable. What is applicable though is SFDR. So according to the, the features of this fund, there will be a disclosure according to Article six or Article eight or Article nine. So this is really important. These guidelines is only about fund names, nothing more. All we write in these guidelines refer to the use of such words in the name. It doesn't impact SFDR. It doesn't impact how Article eight funds are defined or Article nine. So the two things are separate. Of course, there are linkages because we are in, in the world of sustainable finance. But as soon as the fund doesn't use these terms in its name, it's, it's, so these guidelines do not apply. I think that, that must be very clear. So there's no effect on what sustainable investment are or what the proportion of sustainable investment are within the fund disclosing under Article nine and so on. As I said before, you've got to be careful because as the definition of promotion for Article eight in the, in the commission, the UNA or C Y twenty one is very wide. That's why, and that's what our chair said at the very beginning, our concern is with Article eight funds that use such a name. So without these guidelines, what is happening today is that we may have a fund calling itself Clean Energy Fund that doesn't have anything at all in terms of investment promoting these environmental characteristics. That's why we fear there is the risk of greenwashing. But what we are saying here is careful. You want to use this name for all the, the reason we said before, for marketing reason, for the fact that investors actually look at the name for choosing how to put their money, then we want to be sure that there is some portion guaranteed so that you will go towards promoting this characteristic. So very carefully here. Do not confuse the two. SFDR stands, SFDR is applicable fully from first of January two thousand and twenty-three. And if these guidelines will come into force, it will be only about the names, nothing like, nothing, nothing else.
Very good, Davide. Thank you. I have a question here about scope. In terms of scope, would the guidelines apply to all SFDR products or only to funds? This would only apply to investment funds, so funds covered by the Usages Directive and the AI FMD. So we laid out pretty clearly in our, our consultation paper, there should be no ambiguity about this. This is not part of a joint committee empowerment. So this work is not being done through the joint committee. It wouldn't therefore be applicable to all the, the financial products defined in Article two, twelve, to paragraph twelve of, of SFDR. This is only applicable to, to investment funds as we have laid out. The reason for this is, well, first of all, there was no empowerment to do this under the joint committee. And we also felt that in the area of investment funds, the need was, was most pressing. As you've seen from the figures we, we've shown in the consultation paper and explained today in the presentations, there are a very large number of investment funds that are using the SFDR disclosures and using these terms in their name as well. We certainly identified a need here to, to take action that of course doesn't preclude that we in the future may consider something at the joint committee level covering a larger share of financial products. But for now, at least, this is certainly only limited to investment funds under the Usages Directive and AI FMD.
Yeah, this is very good to clarify, Patrick. I have another question here about the threshold mechanism. The question is, does hundred percent investment mean net assets of a fund including cash? Or does it refer to the asset investment, for example, equities only? Now, of course, when we look at the composition of the fund, we know that there are riskation and derivatives. So we look indeed at the hundred percent of the total assets. So what we are saying here, when we ask to apply this eighty percent threshold is eighty percent is the minimum proportion to carry that name. The other twenty percent is screened via minimum safeguards can be cash, can be derivatives. Now, as I said before, how these derivatives would be treated, we will wait for your feedback. But indeed, it is everything. So you have to consider also the cash. So we will, we are looking at eighty percent of investments and exaggerating here, twenty percent cash in the sense.
Very good. Okay. So many good questions. It's hard to choose. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do a quick one. We are not sure about how the guidelines would cover structured funds. Would they be covered in scope as well? Well, then you need to ask yourself, are they a, a usage fund or, or an alternative investment fund? If they are one of those two, then it would be covered. If they are not, then they would not be covered. So the, the scope is quite strict and quite clear, I think, also in the guidelines. There's, there's nothing beyond those that, that would be covered.
I have another question about the, the use of terms in this instance, green. Well, of course, green is one of the term we've been screening the, the, the funds for. About greenwashing, but obviously, yes, green is one of these terms. So as I said before, it was a pretty thorough exercise. We've been going through words, combination of words, acronyms, is that, have we, have we caught everything? No, I'm sure not. But I think what's important here is that, especially for the NCA's, which will be then assessing whether the name applies with these guidelines. It's yes, the threshold. And that's, that's, that's a very easy one. But then, of course, then we like to check whether the terms used match actually the investment strategy. So obviously, you can have plenty of investments, say, in solar energy. But then if you call yourself a water, water fund, well, that doesn't, that doesn't work either. So what I'm seeing here, there is indeed a certain, not saying flexibility, but a certain discretion at NCA level once this rule are, that once this requirement are laid down to actually see what the real intention of the fund manager is when he's using this name. So for us, it's important that this link between name and strategy and then investment of the fund is maintained. And this is actually, as I said before, what's happening now, too. I mean, NCA's won't allow the names which are misleading, even without, you know, his threshold. What we are doing here, as I said before, we are simplifying the thing, we are simplifying things for investor, we are simplifying things for NCA's and so on. But yeah. And that's why we are not even publishing a list of words. And this is also another question I gave. No, we are not publishing a list of words because Because there can be many words. There can be many words that we haven't taken into account, for example. There may be many words that will come in the future with, you know, with the development of technologies, for example. So we cannot really be, you know, give you a list also because there might be the risk that if, you know, there might be the risk of using a similar word to the one in the list, which is not in the list and so doesn't fail under these requirements. So it is not viable. But it's coming back to that. Yes, green is certainly a word we are considering that it was in the list.
Very good. Okay, we have some criticism of the threshold itself. It's good. Good to read this. A minimum percentage for non-financial objectives is good in principle. But the eighty percent rule goes beyond standard requirements set by N C As on financial objectives, which are usually subject to the two-thirds rule. How do you reconcile this? No, that's good. And, you know, we are open to feedback here about the level. Talk about the eighty percent one, which is the minimum commitment to environmental or social characteristics or sustainable investment objective. Certainly, yeah, we are open to feedback here and justification for why, for example, to use the previous question, the use of the word green could, do you think could be satisfied in the mind of a retail investor investing in a green fund if that is only used for sixty-six percent of the investments? Do you consider that sufficient? And if you do, fine, please justify that in your responses. We will certainly consider a lot of these things. We have discussed the level at which we proposed these particular thresholds and these draft guidelines. We're open to more feedback. So we have considered different options and including the way in which some jurisdictions set expectations, supervisory expectations for use of certain financial terms, for example, in the names. But obviously, these are not financial terms. These are non-financial. Obviously, there's also a lot of fear about greenwashing that we're trying to counteract here. So these are all the considerations and our justification for not reconciling a lower share than that.
Yeah, there are a lot of questions about impact funds. And yeah, we welcome that. So, for example, can you please define what impact funds are? Now, we have, as far as I'm aware, there is no legal definition of what an impact fund. There are no more definitions. But what we were thinking when we discussed to introduce, let's say, greater specific requirements for impact funds is to make sure that there is this aspect of the measurable impact that goes beyond the financial returns. So this is actually what for us at this stage characterizes an impact fund. We are obviously open to suggestions, how to better define impact funds. There are the work of the G D, for example, which may result in useful. So please take the chance of the feedback to provide your input on this.
Okay, thank you. I have a good question here. In fact, we are, we're it's a thankless task this because we keep getting more questions and we never seem to be able to reduce the number of lists in our window here. But we keep doing this and we'll do it for another fifty minutes or so. But then we do have to give our head of units the chance to wrap things up. And then we look forward to your consultation response. So I have one question here about the assessment of the threshold. Private market players in particular might not know beforehand what share they would invest in environmental or social and the division between them. Hence, a minimum proportion might be hard to state in the pre-contractual information while the actual portfolio can meet the required thresholds. What is leading in the assessment, the intention, what is leading the assessment? The intention for the actual portfolio. So this goes back to the SFDR disclosures, really. It's quite clear there that this template that is provided under Regulation two thousand and twenty-two, twelve eighty-eight, requires a minimum commitment displayed to the potential investor or investors in the financial product of the share of investments used to meet the environmental or social characteristic for Article Eight or the sustainable investment objective or objectives for Article Nine. And so these decisions have been made already ex ante by the financial products in their SFDR templates. And that's sort of the simplicity of these thresholds in these guidelines, in a way, that whatever you put into the template is what guides the ability to use certain terms in your name. And if, for whatever reason, the eighty percent was not met in that pre-contractual, then obviously, the consequence here is that we believe that the use of E S G-related terms in the name, therefore, would be misleading to an investor in that particular investment fund. And that's the reason why we have chosen eighty percent here and why we have tied it to the SFDR templates. It's precisely this minimum commitment that the fund management company, the question of investment funds, give to investors in their pre-contractual documentation. Now, that's the choice that we've taken. We've opened the door for alternatives. We've already seen some in the questions today, which is good. So it's good that everyone has engaged with the consultation paper and are thinking about this. Very much look forward to your input on this. But to answer your question, hopefully as clearly as possible, it's the committed intention that is this SFDR disclosure in the pre-contractual template in Annexes two and three of the SFDR delegated regulation.
Yeah, I'm taking here another question here. It's a critical one, which is good. It's a critic, actually. So the threshold is very strict. If this threshold would be kept, it would mean that no E S G-related words could be used. Well, not even responsibly used for funds that comply with Article Eight products according to SFDR. After that, we would not see any relevance of existence of Article Eight SFDR. If we would be able to create Article Eight products but not able to communicate their responsible characteristics, there would be no point in creating that. This is one part of the question. The other one is also interesting. Another issue relates to funds of funds. In our opinion, there is need for a lower threshold for funds of funds. So the first part, let me publish this so everybody can see. It's a long one, but it's interesting. So is the threshold strict? Yeah, maybe. Certainly, it can be, an eighty percent can be seen as quite strict. But why is that? Again, talking only name. Eighty percent is high. But please give us the guarantee that there is this strong link between the name and the strategy. Of course, we have said that the name is probably the most powerful marketing tool. So asset manager have all the interest in using a name to help investors choosing. At the same time, our main objective is to prevent, minimize greenwashing. But obviously, one can say seventy percent is high enough as well. But, you know, if we get into this seventy, eighty, sixty, we will never come to a conclusion. So we took a deliberate choice. We did a deliberate choice here to be strict indeed. But that does not mean that funds cannot be promoting their characteristics in other way. And let's not forget that the whole purpose of SFDR is transparency. And from the first of January two thousand and twenty-three, prospectors will have to have annexes plenty of information about the promoted characteristics of the fund. So investors will be able to find what they're looking for, even if not guided by the name. Intermediaries will have to work to promote these funds, even if the name is not even if an E S G name is not possible. So, yeah, I agree, it's quite strict, but it is done on purpose. Of course, we welcome criticism. We welcome other proposals. But that's where we stand at the moment. Terms of fund of funds. We are thinking about this because, of course, funds of funds, you know, how can they use a name? So our logical approach would be to apply the look-through approach. So if at the end, or all the six, seven, four, I don't know how many funds are part of the funds of funds, the sum must come up to eighty percent of the whole investment be able to use E S G terms in that name. But again, feel free to propose something different even also for these particular funds.
Very good. I'll do a couple of short ones, one by one here. So I think I can do a few quick ones. How will ESMA define consideration of E S G when assessing the eighty percent threshold? So as I said, we won't be providing any separate definitions or anything. It's all related to the SFDR templates, that Article Eight or Article Nine pre-contractual template that I mentioned, Annexes two and three in the SFDR delegated regulation. Whatever the fund puts into that specific field about the minimum extent of investments used to meet the characteristic or sustainable investment objective, that's the eighty percent. And then the second one is the minimum commitment to sustainable investments. That's a separate disclosure. That's the fifty percent. So in that sense, there is no above and beyond definitions or considerations in this consultation paper. So then the second one, to be clear, the guidelines only cover use of E S G slash sustainability terms for fund names and does not introduce threshold requirements for a fund to be considered as an Article Eight or Article Nine product, correct? It's extremely important that nobody leaves with that impression. No, certainly not. They only cover a certain additional consideration for those funds that use E S G or sustainability-related terms in their names. It does not set any new criteria or thresholds for Article Eight or Article Nine disclosures. That's completely separately done under the SFDR. And then what happens to those funds that disclose under Article A SFDR but do not include E S G or sustainability in their name? I understand that they are not subject to these proposed guidelines, but wouldn't this mean that they can continue misleading? Well, no. Hopefully, their comprehensive transparency under SFDR would help investors make the right choices. But since they are not using E S G or sustainability-related terms in their names, at least their names would not be misleading. I think that's the key point. We consider the fund name itself to be of such importance that it would require these special considerations in these draft guidelines. Okay, if the Article Eight does not have any E S G-related term, are there any minimum proportion requirements not under these guidelines?
Yeah, I have a question here about the plan to work with other authorities outside Europe, like F C As mentioned here. This is interesting because, you know, in our reflections, of course, of trying to address the issue of greenwashing from names, we've been looking at what's happening outside the EU. Yes, the F C A is also discussing an approach for funding. The S E C in the U S has since two thousand and one specific guidelines for fund names, which are not E S G-related, but generally related. So, for example, if you want to call yourself an equity founder, then you have to have at least eighty percent in equities. But now they are discussing and they have published also a consultation paper on the use of E S G terms. So there is a lot of attention, not only in Europe, but also outside Europe about this. Do we consult with them? There are certainly fora where we meet, where there is an exchange of initiatives. But certainly, we have not submitted this to the F C A or to anyone else. But, you know, there is attention to this, to this aspect. And of course, we welcome any convergence of this, on this. But yeah, this is an initiative of ESMA, an initiative within the European Union, and it will stay as it is.
Thank you, Davide. Okay, we have a few minutes left for questions, so we can take a few more. Thank you for this presentation. According to ESMA's interpretation of SFDR, does E S characteristics refer to the characteristics of the underlying investments? E G invested companies have a net zero target? Or characteristics of the investment process, e.g. negative or positive screening, proxy voting on E S G issues? Or both either? It's both either, in the sense that, as I said, it's whatever the fund puts into their SFDR templates. That choice has therefore been made already in the SFDR disclosures about its commitment to what share of its investments is used to meet its promoted characteristics or its sustainable investment objective. If the fund has defined its characteristics in a certain way, so, for example, applying to the underlying investments or applying to the characteristics of the investing process, that's what applies. And that is indeed potentially a weakness of these proposals. And it gives a lot of discretion to fund managers, to be perfectly frank. Because the choices to promote environmental or social characteristics under Article Eight, the main focus here, is very much left to the financial market participant, the fund management company in this particular case. And indeed, so if industry here thinks that we're being too harsh, perhaps others might think we're being too lenient in tying this threshold to something that is almost entirely at the discretion of the financial market participant, the fund management company, to determine how and which share of investments are used to meet whatever the characteristics that are being promoted.
Yeah, I have here an interesting question. It's about closed fund. So can a closed fund, which is now in its investment period and is no longer in its subscription period, which mainly invest in green energy, really need to comply with Article Eight or Nine disclosures? Or can it just comply with Article Six disclosure? Well, we are talking about here fund which is not available to investors anymore, but it will have to comply with the SFDR guidelines. Terms of names, we've been discussing that there actually, we do not see the need for the fund to change its name while because it cannot, well, the name doesn't act anymore as a marketing tool because subscription period is closed. Who is in that fund, is already in that fund? Actually, there wouldn't be any need for that.
Okay. Did I understand correctly that ESMA is considering developing further guidance for impact funds? If so, will there be a follow-up consultation? We are indeed considering how to apply this to impact funds and we have some suggestions here. There's this combination of these thresholds plus also this recommendation in the supervisory briefing in Article thirty, paragraph thirty, pardon me. That's the kind of proposal here. We want feedback on that. That doesn't mean that there's going to be a separate consultation on this. No, this is part of this consultation that we are seeking feedback on them. Okay, Davide, do you want to take another one?
Yeah, I have an interesting one here. It says, ESMA already has guidelines of marketing communication and targets fairly are not misleading character of marketing communication covering fund names and any other content of marketing material. Wouldn't it be possible to reuse that one to cover your objective? That's very interesting. Now, I fear we have a mold somewhere here because that was the original intention. The original intention was to use these guidelines that are already in application and that deal with names. And the idea was to add a section which would deal specifically with fund names with the threshold. But then we thought, for this reason, then it would be good to add a specific guideline only for this. So to keep the two separate. Of course, as you have seen, we are building upon this regulation. So it's, we are using the fair and not misleading character of marketing communication to issue this guideline. But we thought, because of the importance of such a marketing aspect, to have separate guidelines. we had separate guidelines. But as I said, I'm very puzzled by this question here.
There's questions that that come, you know, in similar vein to others. And it is a bit of a time travel element to hear that we are close to the end here, but I'm still waiting for questions that were posted almost an hour ago. It's it's tricky to 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 keep up, but hopefully the the answers we've given have been helpful. Here's one. Given that sustainable investments is a poorly defined term in SFDR, will there be a further clarification or will it remain up to financial market participant to determine what they consider to be sustainable within the existing regulations? Now, what I mean, obviously, the criteria of Article two seventeen have to be fulfilled. There is economic activities that contribute to environmental, social objectives. The do not significantly harm has to be measured by reference to the PAI indicators. I think there are sixty four of them, so that's not exactly criteria free either. There's not that much discretion on sustainable investments as you would imply in this question. So certainly, that remains an SFDR debate, perhaps more than anything. We at least thought that for the terms that are sustainable or or terms that are derived from the word sustainable, a link to sustainable investment seems appropriate.
Yeah, I'll take a last question, I think. And it's about transition. And this is quite interesting because the question is, are you open to the idea that the word transition could be left out from the guidelines altogether? Because it is semantically too subjective. Yes. We don't have it in the current governments. Because we really thought that it was important to have feedback from the premier. So if indeed we discover the certain the certain words are, as I said, semantically difficult to define, we may avoid to create specific requirement. Now, of course, the word transitional is a key word in in the ESG world because of, you know, the transition to more cleaner energy or else. So we will need to think about it. What we are actually looking for is actually some positive feedback in order to include it. And we have feedback not only from various parts that, you know, that having specific requirement for transitional fund would help also these funds reaching their objective. So it is it is quite tricky, but as I said, we open. We open to everything. We open to dismiss certain words. We are open to better clarify, other words, impact this, for example, one. And so that that's why there is a big value in in your feedback because we are. We are gathering information. We are gathering critics, but we are gathering also this positive feedbacks that would help us to to better define all these aspects leads to the name of a fund. And I think now I think now it's time to give the word to our head of unit close for his closing remarks. We hope we have satisfied your expectation here, that we have clarified as much as we could. And thank you very much for your attention, Antonio.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Davide. I'm I'm Antonio Baratelli. I'm the head of the Investment Management Unit here at ESMA. And indeed, I want just to say a few words to to close this this important event. First of all, I would like to thank again, not only the ESMA Chair and Chair of the Investment Management Standing Committee for their opening remarks, but also in particular Davide and Patik for running through the the various questions that we receive. And it's quite quite a challenging exercise to do this live. Now they are. They are used since we have done a number of of these events, but I think it's always quite quite challenging, but very, very important for for us. So I would like also to thank all the participants for the very interesting input that you send us through to the to the chat. Davide and Patik have tried to address many of the comments and questions that were made, but we are taking records of all those that were received and even those that were shared with the with the whole public and will bear them in mind and consider them for for the next steps. Now, I would like to just briefly go back to some of the main points that were were made. There were a lot of detailed comments also on the technicality of the of the proposal, which is very good and will inform our further further work. There were more general, some more general points related, for instance, to the interaction with the level one provision under under SFDR and the sequencing of of any changes that may come in in that context. Here, I would like to to emphasize once again that the focus of this exercise, these proposed guidelines is about funds names under UCITS NAFMD. And the the basis for this work is indeed the legislation under UCITS NAFMD. Of course, there is a close link to SFDR, but the two pieces of legislation should be kept separate. I saw there was one of the of the comments that was asking, given the recent announcement by Commissioner McGinnis of review and and assessment of SFDR this year, whether our work will which will become effective entering to force next next year is an indicator of delay of the commission work. By by no means the two things are 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 separate. And of course, the idea is not to interfere with SFDR, but just to act given the 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 high risk that we have spotted in the sector in the use of fund name. So we wanted to act and address these potential issues. Then there were also a number of of questions and and comments related to the interaction with work being done in other jurisdictions. So what is being done on the international side or not and also at national level within the EU. So on the international side, as you can see in the in the consultation paper, by the many references that we put to what has been proposed or is in place in in other jurisdictions, what David explained earlier on, of course, we took into account a number of of proposals, those that were out when we went out with our consultation paper. And of course, these were an inspiration for us and will monitor the developments on the on the international level. There are also a number of of provisions at at national level, some guidance that is has been issued by regulators in the in the EU. We bear that in mind. And of course, as for guidance in in general, what we try to do at EU level with the ESMA guidelines is to promote convergence and harmonization, but there may be rules and further guidance that is in place at at national level, which can exist as long as it doesn't jeopardize the functioning of the of the European passport. Then also I saw a number of of questions related to the cross sectoral aspect and possible misalignment that may be created here if we have guidance for the for the fund sector only. This is indeed something on which we we ask a question whether you see merit on going beyond that and do some some work also in 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 other in other areas. So we will welcome even more detailed feedback on on that if you see any possibility of cross sectoral misalignment. But again, to restate that there is no intention to revisit SFDR rules or processes under the current the current guidelines. So a question that asked whether we would revisit the 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 minimum threshold for sustainable assets under Article nine. There is no interaction with that, of course. And then just to say that, of course, all the proposals that we put on the on the table are something on which we want to to gather views. So I would like to encourage you to provide us with with feedback, the the written feedback to the to the consultation. And wherever you spot issues, it would be good that you give us your feedback whenever possible, also making alternative proposal whenever you are not happy with what we we propose. So we will very much welcome any any feedback in respect also beyond what we we gather today. The deadline for the consultation on the twentieth of February, so you have still about a month to then submit your written input to us through our website. So we encourage you to to do so. In terms of next step, once we gather, we close the consultation, we'll start reviewing the responses. We expect there will be a fair fairly high amount of responses, just looking at today's turnaround. So a lot of interest on the on the topic. And then we'll start the work together with the national computer toys to finalize the the guidance for the announced in the consultation papers that will finalize this work in the second, third quarter of this year. Of course, it depends on the number of 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 responses that we receive and how fast we we manage to 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 progress, also depending on the nature of the comments that we that we receive. But that's the plan at these at this stage. And with that, I think that we can come to a close and I would like to, again, thank you. Thank you very much for for the inputs today. And feel free to send your your responses to the to the usual channel. Thank you again and wishing you a very nice day. Goodbye.